We have one item of new business on the docket today. That is the pre-application review of proposed McGregor Woods subdivision to be located at 261 Shore Road, Cornwall on Hudson. The pre-applicant would like to address the board. Just introduce yourself.
Hello, everyone. David Nimatko. We're the architectural firm that's handling this project, both through the planning board and zoning board and the building department process. So we're happy to be here. We refer to you by the planning board for four area variances. I'd like to just give a little background on the project. McGregor Woods subdivision is a 20-acre piece of land right now. The zoning is one acre. Yet due to bulk density requirements and calculations, it was determined that we would be able to build 17 lots or 17 acres of the 20. The building department confirmed and reassured or reaffirmed our calculations and we all agreed that the 17 lots would be applicable. The 17 lots came about because of view preservation requirements. It came about because of steep slope requirements that are outlined in your zoning code, which we took care of on page Plan C1. We outlined the steep slopes, the 35%, 25%, the 10%. And then also on C8, we demonstrated the view preservation of the proposed project from the neighbors down to the river, down to the Hudson, and that has been preserved. So the entire project complies with the bulk requirements of your zoning code for areas, for side yards, and for lot coverage. Yet there are four lots that would not meet the width requirements as outlined in your zoning code. So those lots are outlined, they're lots 10, 14, 15, and 17. And there, I don't have my easel, so I apologize, everybody. They're outlined right here. This plan you do not have. We just produced it. And I was thinking about, our office, we were thinking about the project, and we're asking for four widths, four lot width area variances. Each of them are pretty consistent with the neighborhood. One is for 142 feet as opposed to the 150. Thank you. He's actually the owner of the land.
You.
So the required is 150 feet. The four that we're talking about is 142, 109, 120, and 130. Pretty minor variances. What we did want to bring to your attention is the consistency with the neighborhood. Right above it on the north side of the development, you have the SR zone. And most of the lots in this area here are between 120 and 125 feet in width. In this area here, these lots are all about 50 feet in width. The two that are joined the property are 125 feet in width. And these are the four that we are asking for the variance. They're very consistent with the neighborhood. It's in context with the land. It's definitely in context with the lot widths of other pieces of property within the area. And we feel it's a minor consideration for the board. We hope you feel the same. We did try to preserve the feel of Cornwall. At one time, this project was before the town or before the municipality as a townhouse development many, many years ago. We, I was not a part of that. But yet, as the project included more people of the original owner, we decided that a development of single-family homes would be consistent with the village and would be more contextual with the area. So again, we're asking for four lot width variances. Again, the required width is 150 feet. Ours are between 109 and 120, 130, and 142 feet in width.
And we're confident these are the only variances that we expect will come to the zoning board of appeals for this project, you know, for each of the lots or...
That is correct. We had the opportunity to work with Manny at the building department with a lot of dialogue and correspondence back and forth. And I believe we agree that that would be the four area variances that would be needed to develop the property.
So actually, when I was looking at the plans, since lots two and lots, where is it? Lot six don't have access or are proposed to have access to a public street. I believe those will also need what's called a Village Law 7-736 variance. That's in the state statute rather than the village code. Now, that's not up to me to decide or this board to decide. That's up to either Manny or the planning board. So that is, those are two other variances that they could potentially be back for. But that kind of goes with what's already on the plans. It's just the access.
But to be clear, that's been reviewed and determined that we would not need to request the variance from the zoning board.
Well, the planning board does have the power to refer you to the ZVA, so they could still make that determination. That's up to them, I don't know.
You're absolutely right, but they made their reference already. We've been referred to the zoning board. They've determined the variances that are needed.
Well, yeah, but they could determine you need another variance to find further review.
And then the 17 lot determination, I mean, this has floated around for a little while, is what I understood. And the number of lots, the 17 lots comes down to different calculations in terms of what, you know, which code is applied. Manny, do you have thoughts on that or what happened with the number of lots?
Oh, the number of lots is determined by the calculation based on the slope.
Right.
I believe I have a copy I can give you how we came up with that number.
And internally, we agreed?
We agreed. I mean, we, it was like, as I said, it was the three of us, our engineer, Jason, Pittingerro.
Okay.
Looked at it. They looked at it. And eventually then again, I looked at it. And this is the number that we all agree that is the one.
Okay, good.
I think it's some of the total square footage divided by like 40,000 square feet.
Yeah. I'm just aware that there were, you know, there were some back and forth, is what I understood. Yeah, around, you know, what calculations used and how it's calculated and how they arrive at 17. And there were some, you know, questions around, you know, how that calculation is done. And I just wanted, you wanted it to be confirmed that that we're at the point where that, that had resolved.
Yes, that got resolved, sir.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I guess that's one of the things we, we need to consider with the width variance. Just kind of, like, it looks like the lots that are, that require the variance, they're kind of up in this corner by the cul-de-sac.
Cul-de-sac, yes.
Kind of squeezed into that area. So that's what's kind of causing, it's like a pinch point. So that's, so is that just sort of, you know, I imagine when you're designing the site layout, it's, you have restrictions, you're kind of moving these pieces around. It just, that was what made the most sense to kind of put these lots up in a, what should I call it?
In the cul-de-sac.
Northeast.
Yeah.
Close to the creek too, rather than more.
Yeah, excellent observation. But the cul-de-sac, you know, definitely creates pie-shaped lots. And they all go, they extend deeper, you know, in width, I mean, in depth for each lot along the cul-de-sac. And given the fact that, you know, three acres are determined to be not developable, you know, they're determined to be applied to the zoning code with steep slopes or things of that nature along with the 1,500-foot linear foot road, felt that this was a good approach. It's economically feasible for the project to come to fruition at 17 lots.
Right, because ultimately, right, it could be 16, right? And then you probably wouldn't run in, you know, if you, right, you wouldn't run into this issue.
Exactly. And there were other considerations, you know. I'd like the zoning board to know that we propose to make the cul-de-sac beautiful, if you will. The owner and his representative allowed us to do, to introduce sidewalks and street lighting along there, which would make it very friendly to families and to pedestrian traffic as opposed to vehicular traffic. We have light holes, I believe, almost every 50 feet along the roadway and sidewalks on both sides. So as we depicted in our renderings, we would like to have those type of enhancements. They would be beautiful for that area. And we hope that the board would agree and allow the seven, these four lot width variances to be approved.
I'm just trying to figure out, you know, looking at lots 15, 17, 10, and 14, where the constriction is, where the 109, where the 142, where the... Because maybe this is, obviously, it's probably not to scale, but you know.
No, it's to scale.
It's to scale. It's just hard to imagine, like, at the tip of...
I'm sorry to be in front of you.
No, no, that's okay.
The southwestern point of, you know, lots 15 and 17. If you're looking at my 15 and 17.
Right here, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard, you know, it's hard to see those as 120 and 130 feet. But then looking at lots 10 and 14, one is 109.
This one here.
Yeah, lot 14 is only 109. But on that rendering, it looks very narrow there at the southwestern tips versus, you know, the other two lots where one of them is 109. I don't know, am I seeing that right?
Yeah, I guess, like, maybe we should know this, but do you know what, or at what point?
Yeah, are they measuring it away?
Oh, we, just so you know, the whole land has been surveyed. I mean, we're basing our lot dimensions and areas on accurate and technical information.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, like, in the lot, where are you taking the minimum?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. The minimum width looks...
Is it like along the street?
It goes straight, it goes straight across.
At the street?
Yes.
Okay, that's where it is. It's not, the minimum width of the lot at any point is 109 feet. That's why it looks different. So, because it looks very narrow up at the top where it joins the property up in the cul-de-sac. And that's going to be less than 120 or 130 feet.
This is at the street level.
Okay, I see. Yep. So there and there. Okay. Okay. So the appearance from the street and the uniformity of that, to try to maintain that uniformity without houses back and forth.
Got it, okay. This may be kind of an annoying question. There's not many people. Take a look at it and ask you why. But just looking...
May I approach?
Yeah, of course.
So I could see which point to, thank you.
Looking at these lots up here. Like, this is very narrow. And this one, lot 13, is nice and wide.
Correct.
Is there any way to just sort of kind of shift this down? Make this smaller, make this one bigger?
Well, we had to keep the lot areas, you see, 40,000, you know, 42,000, 40. So your minimum lot area is 40,000 square feet. A builder's acre as opposed to an actual, right? So that's what we have to maintain. And also, when you consider the driveway locations, there is another plan that shows how this technically lines up with each driveway elevation. So then when you reach the cul-de-sac, you can reach each driveway easily. You know, the elevations align. And so it worked, it does work out very well.
So like, this whole area has to stay
Correct.
Above 40.
Correct.
So this one can't get any smaller. It's right in because it's...
Yep, it can't get any smaller. I've already had one scare. I don't want to introduce any other variants. Thank you.
Can you talk more about the slope? You know, I mean, you talked a little earlier about slopes and the terrain that's in there. You know, various, yeah, you're looking at a couple of these where it's like a high and a bluff overlooking wetlands. Now, the ones at the end of the cul-de-sac are the base of a hill that's coming down pretty steeply to it.
Well, yeah, we definitely provided view sheds on C8, if you could refer to that, where it definitely shows the sections through the site from the neighbors above.
Yeah, I looked at that.
We preserved the, we preserved the view so we not affect anything. Are you talking about the steep slopes now?
Yeah, the steep slopes, the topography and what's that's going to be like for water runoff or erosion for, you know, folks living there on top of a wetland or, you know.
Well, that's a very good point. And it came up at a planning board meeting, which actually they allowed comments already, you know, from the audience, even though it wasn't a public hearing. But so we went ahead and addressed them. I mean, we're mandated by state to keep all stormwater on the property itself.
Okay.
So we will be doing that with two retention areas here and over here. And so the street will catch the water and bring it to those retention areas. And then within the site itself, it'll be graded to make sure that it does not, stormwater does not pass on to another piece of land or traverse any other pieces of property. We're sloping down this way, these neighbors would not be affected at all.
Yeah, the ones above it won't.
And then we are preserving the vegetation along here, especially in the paint is the steep slopes that we want to preserve. And that vegetated area would definitely catch any drainage that would be coming from the site. Yes, so Mr. Barabi is absolutely correct. There are some areas that we agreed, but we haven't developed yet. So I don't want to go into it too much. But we will add additional vegetation along the upper part. Where you see where the yellow and the white meet, that's a little bit there right now. So as we develop a tree preservation plan, we did hire an arborist to be involved with that. True new tree or new vegetation will be introduced. And also, I mean, to go one step further, he did walk the land and prepare a report and noted trees that would not be good for the land. And actually, some of the neighbors were having trouble, similar problems with trees that they want to get rid of. So we're definitely going to be getting rid of those and replacing them with species that would be more appropriate to this landscape.
And perhaps don't grow as tall.
What's that?
And perhaps don't grow as tall.
Correct.
If I could just add something in relation to this. My name is Jamie Shavelardi. I'm the applicant of the project. So in preparing for several of the planning board meetings, even though they were public meetings, I walked the 300-foot radius and spoke to many of the neighbors and especially the ones that are up above on the property. So, and assured them that there, obviously, there would be no enthrancing their view. But along with our arborist, what we found was that people were most concerned about trees growing to a height that would block the view of the Hudson. So we agreed to add a deed covenant to all the properties that none of the eventual owners can plant a tree that's above 25 feet. So we cannot block anybody's view. And we talked about the erosion control at the top of the cul-de-sac. What is that, what's the cul-de-sac above the property?
I don't know.
I don't, I don't know.
There's one more, though.
And I don't want, yeah, I don't want, but I don't know.
Yeah, I think it was Andrews. And so, you know, spoke to several neighbors and emailed a lot of the site plans to the neighbors. So full transparency, spoke to all the neighbors, or many of the neighbors. I probably hit 80% of them because some of them weren't home. But we had a lot of, a lot of good conversations, really no objections. And for the concerns that some of the neighbors had, I think we addressed all of them in incorporating certain things into the plan.
How about the, you know, that used to be the southern, I'm sorry, the northern edge, the bottom closest to Shore Road. There used to be a railroad line. Is any of that being regr, I know there's an old, a trestle that went across the creek. Is that being torn out or regraded?
It's actually not part of our development.
It's not, okay.
The line doesn't go through Houston.
It's actually a neighbor.
Okay.
And it's actually a neighbor that Jim had spoken to. And there, we, there might be an agreement where perhaps we may help him do a few things.
Maybe build that house over on Mill Street, right along the rail line, where the bridge above it was. Now, you said there's two retaining pods that are going to be in there?
Oh, yes.
Is it the, is it the original wetland?
Yes, so in addition to surveying the property and identifying many of the characteristics, another thing was identified was brutal wetlands. So we had that officially planned and delineated. And you can see them right here. Or right along here.
Yep.
And over here.
So I guess when you're designing...
I do have a role to play here.
Yeah, exactly. This is my, just a minor role in this whole thing going on.
Good job. With, when you were designing the site plan, I guess those were probably, obviously, the kind of the biggest kind of natural, other than that, the hillside of the biggest natural obstacles sort of. You had to kind of arrange the pieces around.
Exactly, yes. You know, we're going to keep the buffer, we'll protect the wetlands. Actually, no buffers necessary because they aren't, they're federal wetlands. But we're going to protect that area and situate the houses accordingly.
So that's what's driving, like, the two lots that are on the wetland, those are like 53,000 square feet.
Yeah.
The ones up against the steep slope, those are also 57. So those, just because of natural obstacles, those had to be much larger. And then everything else kind of fits into that 40,000 sort of box.
Correct, absolutely.
So there's two properties being, structures that are on lot six and lot eight. Are those above the wetlands or below the wetland? You know, is that, I'm trying to look at the contour in those, where the contour is.
So lot six and lot eight here, the houses would be situated below the wetlands. And we have, we have a driveway, there's a common driveway that would come across and access these two houses.
So below, lower than the wetland?
Yeah.
Know what you mean? So vertical height is, yeah.
Lower in elevation, correct?
Yeah, lower in elevation, okay. Yeah, but they're still lower in elevation.
And just for scale, it looks like the OP, the icons you have for the homes, they're, it's like a 1,500-foot.
30 by 50.
Yes. Is that, I mean, it's kind of outside of what we're, outside of what we're looking at specifically. But is that, has that been prescribed or it's just...
No, it's a footprint. It demonstrates...
Place order?
It demonstrates a general locality of, you know, positioning of the house. We need to do that for the driveway profile, you know, to make sure when you come off the road, the driveway profile is less than, well, 2 and then 5 or 10% to get to the house. So that's how we locate it.
Manny, do you know what, like, they have a 1,500, the homes they have on here, they're like 1,500 feet footprint. Is there a restriction of how big that could be or how high?
The 1,500 feet for what?
For the footprint of the home.
Oh, the square footage of the home?
Yeah.
Uh, no, they only, they got a high restriction, which is the 35 feet and they way, they below that, so, yeah. Other than that, they good. There's no floor erosion, that's what you mean.
Yeah.
They, they okay with that, yeah. No restriction there.
Yeah.
As long as they maintain the setback.
Right, so it's a, it's a high restriction and then you have to be within the set line.
Right, so if you, if you look at the dotted lines on page C2, you see that dotted line around the property? If they stay within those dotted line, they're in compliance.
That's the setback.
Yeah, that would be the setback.
They could build all the, the entire thing.
The whole area, the whole dotted line.
Not to give you any ideas.
No, actually, Jim reminded me, we are focusing our architecture, period style architecture, kind of consistent with the village. So that would definitely be our goal. And we depicted that in some of our renderings to you.
Sort of all over the place.
Yeah, that's beautiful.
Well, period style architecture, yeah.
And then the one or two, you know, the egress, you know, the one or two entrances. Just talk through, you know, that, just a cul-de-sac. But, you know, the factors that go into whether you have to have one or two entrances, you know, to, you know, what goes into that? I mean, I know there've been some conversations before about things like that. This development or others, you know, how many houses or properties are served, fire department, all that, you know, getting in or out. So what's...
Yeah, for the fire department, as long as they provide a turnaround, that's what the cul-de-sac does. He acts as a, as a tool. As long as the fire department can go in and come back out, whether having to back up all the way from the top, they, they're in compliance.
Okay.
And then there is a distant requirement on how the property should be from the fire department assets. They also need that requirement.
Okay.
Okay. Get it?
It's bad.
You have any help?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, so procedurally, the applicants will go back to the planning board. The planning board at some point will issue their secret determination. And then once they do that, the applicants will come back here for a public hearing. And then at that time, you guys will take action on the variances.
One of the other questions often comes up in the variance thing is, you know, your proximity to a state route, you know, yeah, I need it.
Yeah, so that's just a referral to the county.
Right.
If you're in certain proximity.
Yeah, and it's state route like 218 or 9W.
Yeah.
500 feet, 500 yards, can't remember if feet or yards.
Yeah. So I haven't even checked yet to see if we're there.
They're 500 feet from the town, so that triggers the GMO.
Sure.
Okay, okay.
And we have sent it out to various other agencies, DCE and several other agencies.
The village-town boundary is the creek, right?
Yes. I can tell you, we send it to the town. We send it to Orange County Department of Planning, Department of Health, New York State Historic Preservation Office, 911 Communication, Department of Transportation, Central Hashon Gas and Electric, Fire Department, our fire department, sewer district, Lot Department, Department Environmental Conservation, and Army Corps of Engineers. Everybody been...
Great, okay.
And we're actively working with the local water and sewer DPW, you know, on those utilities.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, yeah, very informative.
Okay, so it's your... Okay, so it's your, just, I just have a question from term sure. So it's your thought, we had the meeting, we can be referred back to the planning board, wait for them to finish seeker and then come back for the public hearing?
Yeah, yeah.
Not not to have it now, or not to schedule for?
No, yeah, so the the zoning board can't take any action until.
Until lead agency takes action, got it, okay.
I mean, they could, they could schedule a public hearing, but then you just have to leave it open for however long it takes to work your way through the the planning board. So it doesn't really make sense for you to go through that trouble if you're not ready yet.
Sure. Sounds good.
Great.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much, have a great evening, everyone, thank you.
What's the timing of all, if everything goes through, what's the, what are you thinking about in terms of timing? I'm just curious. How long would it take if anything goes through? To have the, I'm just curious.
Construction.
Yeah, all that stuff, like.
To finish the whole approval?
Yeah, how long, no, no, forget about the approval, say the approvals go through, like, just to build and have it done, what's the time?
Oh, probably, well, do you want, they want to know how long it's going to take to build.
I'm just curious.
The project?
Yeah, yeah, if you, from start to finish, then it's just a couple of years out or?
I mean. Yeah, probably a couple of years. I mean, I, you'd probably build and sell five or six homes a year, seven, you know, something like that, depending on demand, and I think demand's going to be pretty high.
Great.
Yeah. I love you, I'm from there, so I can't, but I love coming here.
Great.
Thank you. We have one.
We got some minutes to.
The province's glorious minister here.
That's right.
It only took me a year to get them to you.
Just a year, right?
Just a year.
This is a very complicated situation. This is the pool, this is the pool, right?
It was the pool, but I wasn't here, so, so I couldn't hear half of it, but.
No, this is boring.
You're getting, you're getting.
No, I'm getting. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, 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 this was the one up there, this one up there.
Up there, Homer, Homelands?
It's like the homeland, that was that.
Uh, it's on Homelands, right.
Oh, yeah, it's from Warner, yeah.
Let's see, so old business, approval of minutes from May ninth, twenty twenty-four. Does anyone have any revisions they want included here?
No, I think we're good.
Motion to approve the minutes, ZBA minutes from May ninth, two thousand twenty, twenty-four.
I'll move.
Yep.
Good.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, this is.
Okay. Leading is adjourned.